Good evening, everyone. We're going to start our board meeting a little differently tonight. We have to do our annual code of conduct hearings, and that's going to begin now.
All right. So I am here to do a review of some changes of our code of conduct. So I'm going to say page numbers. If you want to scroll down to them, you're welcome to, but don't feel as if we have to go page by page. But so, so we did a really thorough review of our code of conduct this year. When it comes to code of conduct, it really has to be based upon state law and regulation and also case law. So what Mary Ann and I did as the board president and the superintendent, we sent our code of conduct to our school attorney's office, and they really did a deep dive into it. And then together, we met for several hours with their school attorney and reviewed some suggestions for change. So the suggestions that we are going to be presenting to you are really based upon school law and case study. That's always constantly changing. So that's why it's a regulation in New York State that we review this every year because things are always changing. So our code of conduct is really, as every code of conduct, is really based upon regulation. From there, then, our schools are going to take our code of conduct, and they are going to look at their handbook to make sure that their handbooks are aligned. Now, a handbook isn't just a regurgitation of the code of conduct. It does have code of conduct pieces, but then there's other pieces within every school's handbook. So here in Chatham, we have one district code of conduct, and then every single building has their own handbook. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understands the difference between those. So I'm going to go through, and I know this is a hearing, so we're not approving this today. So this is more of just a description of the changes. And if anyone has any questions over the next 30 days, it has to be posted for at least 30 days. It's also found on our website, so you have a version of this on our website, and it's also on Board Talks. So if the board, if you're reviewing it or anyone is reviewing it, they have any questions about it, we have 30 days before it's going to be adopted. So this will be adopted at our next meeting. So I'm just going to kind of go through a brief overview of some of the changes. I will give page numbers. Harris is going to do his best. If anybody wants a paper copy of the code of conduct, the new code of conduct, I have them here. Anyone want a paper copy? All right, let us know if you do as we go through it. So one, one change that was made, because there was change in some, some case law, was the definition of sexual orientation. So on page four, you'll notice that there is definitions. So that updated language, that updated definition, is based on the human rights law. So that is the same definition of sexual orientation that is found in New York State human rights law, and that's on page four. I want to let everyone know that we updated our dignity act coordinators. We have to update this yearly, making sure that the people that are going to be the dignity act coordinators are listed, and they have to be listed yearly. We looked into this to see if we could be broad about it, but part of regulation is that code of conduct has to list the names of these people. Throughout the whole, throughout the whole, based on our attorney's guidance, throughout the whole document, there were some words that said "will", and our attorney recommended that we change any word that said "will" to "may". And again, because you can't always guarantee that it's going to happen this way because we're dealing with students and kids, right? So the word that she asked us to change was "may", so you'll see that throughout the new document that we're looking at. On page 16, we took out exclusion from school environment. So one thing that we had a lot of conversation about is that, according to New York State, you cannot exclude a student from their educational environment unless, unless a principal or a superintendent approves that. So in this, we took out some language from exclusion from the school environment. It's actually against New York State regulations to remove a child from the classroom environment unless we do certain protocols, which are all listed in this, in this code of conduct. On page 16, we added "but are not limited to", because for everything, these aren't the be all end all, again, because we're working with kids. These are just suggestions when it comes to discipline and suggestions when it comes to different behaviors that we may see. You know, in education, we can't predict what's going to happen with any child, right? So rather than saying, rather than, we are using the words "but are not limited to", but anytime listing anything, and you'll see an example of that on page 16. On page 17C, we took out the word "public", so I'm, just want to look at that really quick. So on page 17, it said inappropriate public sexual contact. So we took out the word "public", it's inappropriate sexual contact, period. All right, so we just took out that word "public", I just wanted to put that on the record. We reworked on page 21, the definition of progressive discipline. So one thing in New York State, they are really being stricter and more, and, you know, stricter than ever before when it comes to suspension. Like I said, to remove a kid from a classroom environment, we have to try a whole lot of other interventions before we do that. And one of the pieces that they're asking to do, us to do, is more progressive discipline style. There is actually regulation out there in, in some different people lobbying that a superintendent, even, even a, a principal, they want us to not have the right to suspend a student from school. And I have to say, as we've been lobbying, that we still have that right because there are some circumstances where a child can't be in school because of the discipline that they did. But I just want you all to know where the perspective that New York State is coming from. They really want to get rid of the option to suspend, period. So that, just food for thought. That is not law yet, and I'm hoping it's not going to be because there are some circumstances that, that we have to suspend or we should suspend a student from school, but it's certainly not something that New York State is wanting us to do. So we added more language on progressive discipline to really, to really, you know, refocus on that. On page 23, we wrote description of procedures based on the education law of an apparent notification. Anytime we remove a child from an educational setting, even a classroom, we have to, by regulation, we have to notify those parents and follow procedures to do that. So we had to rewrite that description based on the educational law changes as well. On page 24, for in-school suspension, we had, we changed the word "authorizes" to "acknowledge". So in our last code of conduct, it said we authorize that the principal and superintendent can use in-school suspension rather than out-of-school suspension. Rather than authorize, our attorney suggested that we use the word "acknowledge", that we acknowledge that principals and superintendent can use in-school suspension. Page 24 and 25, our past code of conduct actually was against regulation. So the previous code of conduct allowed teachers to be able to remove a disruptive student from their classroom for up to two days. And all they had to do is they had to let the principal know that they were doing that. According to case law, only a principal or superintendent can give an out-of-class suspension, and we must follow the notification criteria. That doesn't mean a teacher can't go to their principal and say, you know, we, we need to do something about it, but that has to come from the principal or superintendent, it can't come from the teacher. So on page 24 and 25, we reworked the wording in that to go, to follow case law. Now, a lot of times what happens is somebody will put a lawsuit against something, and that will change law, and a lot of these cases, that's what happened. So that's why we have our attorney look at it because they're, they're familiar with all the cases out there, and we call that case law. Page 24, updates based on language, again, of case law for out-of-school suspension. So there were some changes to that that we added to on page 24 when it comes to out-of-school suspension. And then we, again, on page 26, we updated the appeal language based on state regulation. So you could see, this is why it was really important to have our attorney really do a deep dive in this because things are constantly changing. So we feel really good about, about that thorough review. Page 26, there was a section in our old code of conduct about permanent suspension. A superintendent or a principal have, or a board of education have no ability to permanently suspend a student. It's not even an option. The only one that can actually decide on that is a commissioner, and, the commissioner of education. So that has to be, you know, and, and I, talking to our attorney, there are very few, if any, permanent suspensions given in New York State. So we removed that language, period. You know, if we ever had an issue with that, where we felt like we needed to permanently suspend a district, we would need help from our attorney to give that, to give that appeal to the commissioner. So we took that language out, period, because it's not really even an option for us. Page, and again, that all goes back to case law change with, with New York State wanting kids in school in any way possible. Page 27, we removed language on minimum periods of suspension notice. So in the old code of conduct, it kind of repeated this language. Anytime we remove or suspend or remove a child from an educational setting, the same notifications to parents must be followed. So we just made that consistent throughout the document. You know, so that's why it's really important that the principal or the superintendent are the ones to take them out of the education because if a teacher did it and we didn't do the proper notifications, we then would be liable as a district. Page 29, alternative education. We changed some of the language on appealed by the board. Just rather than using alternative, we changed some wording of that, very, very basic, basic language. On page 34, we updated the manifestation section because manifestation hearing, just so I know maybe a lot of people don't know what that is, that's if a child has a disability and we're looking to possibly suspend that child. Before a superintendent can do a long-term suspension, you have to have a manifestation hearing. So we changed the language because in the manifestation hearing, that has to be done before the superintendent's hearing. Because if that behavior, it was because of a child's disability, the CSC has to decide that in a manifestation hearing. So we changed the language to make sure that the manifestation hearing is done first, and then we go to the superintendent's hearing. And if it is part of that child's disability, then I, as a superintendent, cannot suspend. You have to change the child's program. So we changed the language to meet that criteria. In the past code of conduct, there was a section on corporal punishment. In our new code of conduct, we wrote on there, because by New York State regulation, corporal punishment is strictly forbidden. So it just says on there, strictly forbidden, it can't happen. And then we define what it means. On page 38, we changed some, some language on there because legal advises that us as a board, you as a board, I should say, prohibits strip searches. So there was a section in the old code of conduct that gave some language about it. Our legal advice is to not ever allow strip searches by any school employee. Lot of case law out on that, and it's not good for districts. So that's something you should never do. If we feel as if we do need to, and it defines what strip search is, if we feel as if we do need to do something to search for something that could hurt somebody, her recommendation is to call 911 and let the police support us in that rather than ever putting anyone, school nurse, principal, superintendent, in a position to ever strip search anybody in our district. And Mary Ann can attest to that, she was very, very clear on that directive. Page 40, about visitors. We took out the section that in the past code of conduct, according to the code of conduct, a parent or a visitor or a citizen of the community could make a request to observe a classroom. And you didn't even really need permission, you just had to tell them that you were doing that. That is not something that, that legally we ever have to do, and her recommendation, and my recommendation to the board, is to not allow that, that somebody can't just come in and say, I want to observe a classroom. That would have to be a planned business, and there would have to be a purpose for that because that can really get out of control. So that is a recommendation from her. So we changed the language in there, saying that, of course, we want parents and community members in, but it has to be through invite only, it has to be consistent business going on. And then finally, last one, page, page 43. In the past, it said in here that the principals of the building are in charge of enforcing the code of conduct. Talking to our attorney, the recommendation is that all employees, all staff, teachers, faculties, administrators, board of education members are all responsible for enforcing the code of conduct, not just a principal or his deputy. So you can see, you know, quite a few changes, important changes. And again, most of these changes were based upon legal advice. So that is it in a nutshell.
So from here on out, anyone with comments, just reach out.
Yeah, so anyone that has comments or thoughts or ideas, they could reach out to either myself as the superintendent or to Debbie, and then we will let the board know. If we need to make any changes, you know, or if we're going to recommend any changes to the code of conduct, we would approve it at the next meeting, we would have another discussion about it, see if the board wants to make the change, and then we would approve it at the following meeting. If we have no comments for change, we will approve it at the next meeting. Okay? There's no, like, rush on this, it's not like there's a deadline. As a board, you'll, though, you have to approve a new code of conduct yearly. So it's not like there's a, we have to have it done by July, we can only move it to August if we have more discussion. Okay?
It looks like maybe the page numbers are different for font sizes or something, but on the original file, I don't know, even the numbering's a little bit different.
So you're saying from the paper copy that I gave you versus?
Versus what I'm seeing in the agenda, so I don't know which one you want me to read first.
Use the paper one, I have the paper one in front. I used the paper one when I went through it.
I don't know, it's, it's, the numbers and pages are different.
Use your paper copy, that's the one I have.
Pages 18, 11, and 12 are duplicated, it's, it's like, but, otherwise, I can't wait to go through this.
Yeah, go through and give us your comment, and we can, and just send it to me before the next meeting so that way we can go through it. So what'd you say, page 18, what?
18, 11, and 11 and 12, it looks like they're duplicated.
Page 18, but you, so you're saying they're the same pages?
No, 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 on page 18.
Okay, oh, I see what you mean. Got you. Oh, thank you. Yep.
So I don't know if there's, if one is slightly different or?
I'll take a look, yeah, I'll take a look. Yeah, so this is, like I said, 30 days, so if anyone has any comments, send them to myself, you can send them to Mary Ann too, Dev. And then we can, and then what we'll do, if we have comments of looking for change, we can talk about them at the next meeting and approve it August. No rush.
Debbie, do I need to do a motion for adjournment so we just adjourn? Okay, let's adjourn the code of conduct public meeting and start our regular meeting. We'll begin with our pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the Chatham Central School District is to provide students an education that nurtures intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with the knowledge, problem-solving abilities, and character needed to participate ethically, adapt, succeed, and contribute in their future educational career and community endeavors. Can I have an approval of the president's?
Second.
All in favor? Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so we're going to go to our first public comment section. Anyone here to speak for a public comment today? Then we'll move on to board member comments. Do the board members have anything they'd like to say? Quite a group today.
It's just really wonderful to see the number of teachers we have and staff members we have here this evening, whether you're retiring into a new set of choices you can make or whether you are receiving tenure tonight or supporting someone who's receiving tenure. It's just so good to see all of you here.
I agree, I'd like to give a round of applause. Okay, so we will move on to board recognition.
So this is, this is the most fun part of my job, is when we get to recognize people. I love to do this. So what we did for everyone receiving tenure, we're going to do tenure first. We are going to, we made a certificate for you. So I'm going to call the person's name, we can applaud for that person, and then we'll go on to the next. Now, some of these people couldn't make it today, so I'm still going to say their names, so if they're not here, we'll just skip over them. We have a large group of tenures, this was a big hire year this year. So Lindsay Forcutis. We're going to do a picture at the end. We have to do a picture, so we'll, once we call all the tenure, we'll do a picture really quick with everybody so we can get that posted. Stacy Gazda. Patricia Velez. Elizabeth Pegarella. I was going to put an R there, but I didn't. Emily Disneris. Alyssa Kolb. Amanda McCullough. Hannah Brando. Rachel Trank. Tara Van Lee. Seth Tillingast. Melissa Lawrence. Brett Fortran. And last but not least, Sarah Mason. Got everyone? I was worried that we were going to miss somebody. Okay, could we do a picture behind this bookshelf? So if you are here for tenure, if you don't mind just coming behind here really quickly, we'll do a quick picture so we can get that on the website.
Okay, so we're going to move on to honor our 2024, 2025 retirees.
All right, so now we get to honor our retirees. And again, not everybody can make it. So first, we have Linda Colwell for 30 years of service. Mark Pearson for 37 years of service. Patty Mesakil for 21 years of service, she can't be here tonight though. And Teresa Rossi for 20 years of service to the district. And then we have Brian Simon for 24 years of service to the district. So if I can have all the retirees behind the bookshelf for a quick picture?
It took a while, but mine eventually did. Mine was just super slow and eventually loading. I think they're, they're, they're like that sometimes. It's, it's like that sometimes. It used to be more frequent, I haven't seen it in a while.
Okay. Good night, everyone, thank you for coming out. Congratulations. Brian's a gut and blunt to punishment, you're going to stick it out for a while. Okay, so the last presentation is recognition for our student representative Sasha.
So I, I just have to say, I've worked with a lot of students through, you know, many different ways, and Sasha has truly, truly impressed me. You know, I've worked with her through Ascend, I've worked with her through this board, I've, I've seen her in any events, and you, you just really have been incredibly impressive to this district. And what a difference you've made for the student body by being this representative. So I'm really excited for Sasha, she's going to school to be a teacher, which is awesome. And I, and I think she's going to be a fantastic teacher. And know that you always have a home here in Chatham, and please come back and teach someday. And if you ever need any advice from any of the teachers or administrators, we're always here for you. So Sasha, thank you for your service to the board and to the district, and we wish you well. Thank you. Any other board members want to say anything to Sasha? No pressure.
No pressure, no, no, it has truly been a pleasure. I've really enjoyed your reports and just what you bring to the table with your professionalism, and I just really enjoyed having you this year.
Yeah, Sasha, you're going to be an amazing teacher. Thank you, you've been wonderful.
Make sure you don't leave Chatham without getting a letter of recommendation from us, just in case you need it. We'll, we'll figure it out.
All right, everyone, are we ready to move on to building and department reports? So I have a principal's building update.
So, thank you. Megan, Meg King, and she, we're going to be approving her as a new person this year on our staff. So rather than her just wait the whole time, I just wanted to acknowledge her so that way you don't have to wait for her to, you're welcome to stay. But I just wanted to say that Meg is our new, Meg is our new eighth grade teacher who will be starting in September, and she can't today because you are going to be approving her a little bit for that position. So if, Meg, if you want to wait, you're more than welcome to, and thank you for coming. And we really look forward to working with you here in Chatham. I think you're going to really enjoy yourself here, it's a good place. So thank you for coming. So thank you for coming. And congratulations. You're welcome to stay. Not you, Ariel. Not you.
Ready? Okay. So I had to ask Deb when the last time we came together because so much has happened in the last few months at the elementary school. I have two pages worth of things. Someone has, I kind of broke it up into categories this time. So as far as music goes, we had a very successful Wizard of Oz musical. I told Cassidy Flanagan, who was the director, that it was one of the best group of kids I've ever seen come through the elementary school. They're so talented. I can't wait to see what they do when they get into high school. We had a very successful fourth and fifth grade spring concert. And of course, as every year that I've been here, I think with the exception of COVID, we did our Arbor Day where each class sings. And Mr. Court was able to participate this year. And the fourth grade danced around the maple. We had a lot of field trips. The fourth grade through the DEC, Department of Conservation, they raised trout in their classroom. And then they released them at Krelin. So we did that in late April. Mr. Boxer's class took its annual field trip to Ooms Farm. Fifth grade went to, used to be called Nature's Classroom, now it's called Outdoor Classroom this May. And we had 96% of our students go. That's the highest we've ever had. So almost everybody went and participated and stayed overnight. It was amazing. Andrew actually and I happened to wind up there on the same day. It was a lot of fun. Third grade, every year, takes their annual trip to the Equine Advocates, which is a wonderful stable. And they always have a great time there. Second grade went to Mud Creek to learn about insects, which was one of their units. Fourth grade did a community walking field trip. They went to the Tracy Memorial. They went to the yoga studio Firehouse. And they wound up at the fairgrounds for pizza and pops. First grade took a trip to the Mysai Museum in Schenectady. I lost a few years off my life by taking second, third, fourth, and fifth grade to the Valley Cats game. Maybe rethink that for maybe just two grade levels next year. Second grade went to the Public Library for their annual trip. Fourth grade went on a Dutch Apple Hudson River history trip. And second grade went to Russell Sage to see the musical of Robin of Sherwood, Myths and Tall Tales. PTA did our Scholastic Book Fair. At our May Assembly, I honored our PTA. They do more so instead of giving two students an award. I gave two PTA members an award. They were shocked. They had no idea what's going to do it. And they've just been a tremendous asset to our building this year.
Is Mr. Rollison still here?
He's not. Okay. In May, many of you may or may not know that I was kidnapped/stolen. And the fifth graders had to use their sleuthing skills, critical thinking skills, and teamwork to discover that the culprit was Mr. Rollison. So I'm glad he's not here. On more of the academic side, we did our three through five assessments in math, ELA, and science. We did kindergarten screening and pre-K screening for all of our incoming pre-K and kindergarten kids. I know I'm gonna steal some thunder when I talk about this, but we did our relocation drill as a district. Very successful, at least for the elementary school. Kids were amazing. I have to say, the one thing that we had that truly was an asset was the amount of law enforcement presence that helped us cross. Because as you would expect, halfway through the line of elementary students, the trains went through. So half of the elementary students were across the tracks and the other half were still coming. So law enforcement was amazing to help us. And I think it was a really successful drill. We just did our moving up ceremony this week, and we had our senior walkthrough. And then coming up is our pre-K celebration on Friday. I'm sorry. Pre-K celebration is tomorrow. Kindergarten celebration is Friday. And then, of course, we have Field Day, which we're allowing parents to come to this year. Yeah. So it is very busy at the elementary school. Very busy.
What day is Field Day?
Field Day is the...
Monday or Tuesday?
Monday, Monday with a rain day of Tuesdays.
Monday's gonna be really hot.
Well, we have a lot of order activities for Field Day, so that's good. So that's elementary school. Anybody have any questions? Took a little while today to write it all, but yeah.
All right, so I am not as organized as Kristen, so mine is just a ruling list. So recently, we completed all of our eye-ready testing as well. I want to note that of the 230-ish students that we have, 169 made at least their years growth. So I'm pretty happy with that. That doesn't mean they were all on grade level, but that means that they all made at least a full years growth or more. So we had a big ice cream social for that last Thursday. So I was pretty proud of that. Last week, we celebrated Arbor Day, which is a huge tradition here at Chatham. We also honored Patty Keel, who's a retiree that was in our building. We dedicated a tree to her, which will be planted outside of the MED playground for her. She came with her family. Pretty touching. Patty's done a lot of time and effort here. Let's see. Field trips. Sixth grade went to the Bronx Zoo a couple of weeks ago. Seventh grade is going to New York City on Friday. And eighth grade is going to Boston next week on Tuesday. Sixth grade also recently went to the Martin Van Buren House a couple of weeks ago. We also went to the Valley Cats game along with Kristen's building. We completed our field testing for eighth grade earth science and for seventh grade math as well. Always fun. We always seem to get picked. Eighth grade rehearsal, moving up ceremony, and dance are this Friday in the high school auditorium. Last week, we inducted 11 new members into National Junior Honor Society at the high school. We had an miserable performance at White Plains, as well. Our students did very well. Our music program is famous to thrive, as lots of you guys saw at the Music in the Parks ceremony. We held our pre-AP English exam and pre-AP history exams for eighth graders to set them for their courses in the high school. We also had mental health awareness in May. And we had a lot of activities around that. And regards to our music program, we had the sixth grade concert and the seventh and eighth grade concert last month, as well as at the marching band in the Memorial Day Parade. I'm always impressed with what we produce at the middle school level, our music program. Fifth graders are coming to the middle school tomorrow morning to spend a half day with their sixth grade teachers, get a lay of the land, and do some tours and ask them any questions as they like. So that should be fun. May 7th, our seventh graders went to EDU to raise the students in the third grade, I believe. I'm not sure what grade it is. May 6th and 7th, we have the Spring Fleeing Globe Party for grades 6 and 7. The sixth graders advocated for that. We were a little nervous about sixth and seventh graders, but they had the time of their life. So I think that that will be a tradition that we look forward with. I just want to echo what Kristen said. The emergency relocation drill was phenomenal. Thankful for the law enforcement. And I also wanted to thank the St. James staff. The middle school went to the St. James Church, and they were phenomenal there. So it was always good to have the community's support. We also have a staff appreciation luncheon somewhere in the next of May. And I want to thank Mrs. Natural Lee. She has several kids in the district, and she has been a phenomenal organizer there. I also want to give a shout out to Jeff Artist, who is an eighth grade teacher who Miss Champagne is taking his position for. But Jeff is moving on to an admin position. Jeff has been in the district in the middle school and the high school for 10-plus years. And Jeff started up the fishing club. And the fishing club is caught on here. It's been absolutely phenomenal. So I want to wish Jeff good luck in his new position at Ravino. But also thanking for starting the Sisso Fish. I think that's gonna catch on. There's a lot of local community and organizations that are willing to donate. And I want to give Jeff credit for that because that's been a huge addition, and the kids have really liked it. And we have a new advisor for next year, correct? Yes, Tyler Cowherd's gonna do it next year. So it will continue on. It will continue on, which is great. I also want to give a shout out to the Chatham teachers here. Went to the retirement party last week for the retirees that were all mentioned here. I've been at Chatham for seven years, and I haven't seen that many Chatham staff all in one place, recognizing the accomplishments of some of our staff. And it was really, really good to see that. So I want to give a shout out to the teachers here for organizing that. And last but not least, we have our eighth graders taking, our Advanced Basement eighth graders taking earth science and algebra regions this week. So we are wishing them the best of luck. I think the tests are tomorrow and one later this week. And then we wrap up finals week. Two full days left to school. So we're here at the end of it, and we're still standing. So any questions?
And I just, I forgot something very important. We had, one of our elementary teachers was honored by WMHT during their teacher appreciation week. It was Connie Reikart. She's a fifth grade teacher. And Nicole, is it Brunis? Brunis? Bruins? Who is, she's got a new married name, who is a quest star. She specializes in science, and she works and coaches with us. She, out of all the teachers she worked with, she recommended Connie. And so Connie got a special shout out. So I had it on here, and I skipped right over it, so.
My list is somewhat shorter. But Sasha and I meet before her updates every time she gives them. And so I want to save some of the things that she's gonna say for her report. And I know you've heard a lot about the goings on at the high school in her reports as we move forward. But there are some things that I want to lift up. We had our last day of classes yesterday. As is traditional, I gathered the seniors in the lobby to send them away. There were a few tearful moments, but mostly there's a great feeling of pride and celebration at the culmination of a long journey for many of them. And they were very excited, and some of them a little bit tearful to be heading away. Last day of classes means that exams are fully underway here. We had some last week. And then it's exams from here on out here at the high school. The cafeteria and the gym have been fully converted. And knock on wood, everything has been flowing relatively smoothly so far with that. That's a lot of effort from our facilities team and teachers and administrative staff in getting things organized just right. With the added wrinkle that the Capital Project is also gearing up for full implementation. And we've been clearing out the science and shop and art rooms. If you happen to swing by those rooms and peek in the windows after the meeting, they are just empty shelves at this point. There's a lot of progress that's already been made. And the science rooms and the shop are a lot bigger than I thought they were. They're just huge and cavernous right now. Obviously, the event coming up that we are pouring a lot of our hearts into is graduation. And it is looking great. We have coordinated with the town of Chatham to arrange for the graduation parade after the ceremony. We'll follow the same route and lineup procedures as it has in years past. Information about that has gone home to families. Information about that will go home to families again. And we'll kind of review that with the seniors during their graduation rehearsal, which is on Thursday before graduation, so that we can line up and have a nice orderly parade and preserve that tradition. Sasha's obviously gonna mention Music in the Park. It was wonderful. I just want to let everybody know that, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces in Chatham right now. And at 7:00 in the morning on the day of Music in the Park, we did not know that Music in the Park was gonna be in front of the building as opposed to behind the building. We made that choice. We probably could have held it in back of the school, but just the number of shipping containers back there, we thought it looked a little too job-sitey. And it was, we determined that we needed a new spot. We walked around the building a lot and determined what the new spot would be. And I just want to say that our custodial crew and our maintenance crew and our music staff pulled that change of venue together seamlessly so that if you were an audience member and didn't know that at 7:00 in the morning that wasn't the chosen venue, you probably wouldn't have known that. And I just wanted to say that they did a phenomenal job with that, orchestrating that move. And I've been contacted this week. The impact of a Chatham education goes a long way. A member of the alumni community had reached out to me just this past week, wondering what is the best way for them to contribute to Chatham. And wanted to open a conversation of how to organize this class and work together to do some good work here. So that's, that's all I'm gonna say. Sasha has more for you. But it is, it's an exciting time. And I'm really looking forward to seeing this group of students walk across the stage in two weeks. They've done a lot of work, and it'll be nice to celebrate them.
Thank you, Miles. It's great to have you here. This is your first full experience in putting all of this together. And you're right, we didn't know about the Music in the Park. And I understand, I mean, I have a lot of great feedback. But I understand why now they like to have it in the back because the way it casts the sound. Some of the sounds got frowned out a little bit. I mean, if you know the mechanics, the science behind it, you know. But other than that, they loved the trees, and it was beautiful. But I understand why they would want to go back to that because it does throw the sound at the audience better. Make sure it's all cleaned up back there for...
Well, I should, I should say, next year's portion of the Capital Project is the band and chorus rooms. And so the back of the building will likely still be unavailable. So we may actually hire a sound technician next year to make sure that the sound in front is better because it's...
People enjoyed the trees and...
Yes.
You guys, it was great. It was great.
I say, it was beautiful. The purpose of it and everything was just outstanding.
It sure would have looked great on that new parking lot that we no longer have in sight.
It's coming. Everything's coming.
Can I just, I just want to say one thing. As the, well, I guess senior is not the word, but as the senior administrator, because I am the oldest administrator, I just want to say a personal congratulations to Brian. He and I have worked together for a long time. He was like my right-hand man when I first started here. If I had any kind of problems, whether it was professionally or if I just was struggling and I needed someone to talk to, he was always there. So I will miss him immensely. So congratulations. You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Thank you very much, guys. Sasha?
Okay. So like Ms. Reece said yesterday, it was the last day of classes. The, in the morning, all the seniors met at the Chatham Little E complex for our senior sunrise. I'm not sure if that's been the class we've done in the past, but it was very special. All the, our parents donated food, and we all had a breakfast together. So that was a really special way to start our last day all together. And I just want to thank, of course, Ms. Williams for helping put that all together and all the parents who contributed to that. And they ordered us all like the yard signs and had our senior pictures on them. And that was really sweet. They all had them on the hill, so like walking into that was super, super sweet. And then we did have the senior walkthrough through the MED yesterday morning. And that's when we got our capstone gown. So everyone was really excited trying those on. And it was just a really meaningful experience to have all the little kids. They all like made us signs, and we're all cheering. There was some music. It was really sweet. And then, like Ms. Reece mentioned, on the last, like at the end, the last bell, we all gathered together, and we all got to walk out. So just all, having been together for so long, getting through that last thing together was really sweet. And then, on the topic of seniors, I just want to talk about, we had the senior awards night la, or on June 5th. I guess two weeks ago at this point. But that was really fun. We had the first hour, people would come and look at all the expo boards that were set up. And there was a lot of really, really good ones. Kids put a lot of effort into them. And then for the second portion, we were in the auditorium, which was air-conditioned, which was really nice. The one hot day, of course, was that night. And the kids were all just kind of recognized individually and received scholarships and awards. That was really special. And just, I just want to also say about yesterday, it just looked like a lovely day. I think kids were really obviously sad because it was the last day. But teachers and the staff and the faculty did such a great job making it special and meaningful. It was like, it was hard to be sad because it was such a nice day. And it was also sunny, which helped. I'm sure everyone knows, but softball with their state championship is amazing. I just, this group of girls has been working together, especially the seniors, but also everyone on the team since they were like seven years old. So then having this, this thing together is amazing. I went to the brewery on Friday to watch like the semifinals game. And there was just so much support from everybody there. And I love watching the community come together for the sports and anything at Chatham. And then the coming home parade. I didn't realize that it started all the way up by like K-Fit and Kinderhook, but apparently there was like people like all the way from there to Chatham. So I'm really, really happy for them. And AP capstones were last Tuesday. And as far as I heard, it's been the same positive feedback where kids felt much more relieved after... And as far as I heard, it's been the same positive feedback where kids felt much more relieved after it. And it was a lot less stressful than they were anticipating. So I'm very happy for them that they got to do that. Music in the Park was last Wednesday. There were so many people there. I think that, I think they added another grade that wasn't normally there then before. But so, so, so fun to see everybody out there together. And it's such a, is a lovely tradition that I love that Chatham does that. The juniors went to Great Gatsby last Thursday, but a couple of seniors got to go, especially since a lot of the juniors couldn't go because of softball. And it was such a fun field trip. We took the bus to Poughkeepsie and then got on the train and got to all go to the city. And that was fun. It was a lot of kids' first times being on the train. And the show itself was incredible. It was, it was really good. The whole set of everything was incredible. And we had a little free time to eat and explore the city, which also was super fun. There was the sports awards last Monday. And the Thursday that we were at Gatsby, Duck Donuts donated donuts to the senior class, which I guess we won in a raffle somehow. And it was a little disappointing for the seniors that were on the Great Gatsby trip, but Ms. Keegan was kind enough to save us all donuts who weren't there. So thank you to Ms. Keegan. And then I do now have permission to tell you who the next student representative is going to be next year. So we have decided that it's going to be Jaden Blair. I don't know if any of you know, but she is a super sweet girl. She's very amazing. She's very involved in the school, which is one thing that we were very impressed about her with. So I think she's going to do a great job next year. And then on the topic of student government, we just purchased a new microwave for the cafeteria because that's been one of the biggest requests all year is that it doesn't warm people's food up fast enough. So I've had good experience with it so far. I warmed up my donut in there and it worked out great. The classrooms are being cleared out. It's kind of sad, like being a senior and everything around us is just like being uprooted and moved. But the teachers are very excited to be getting their new classrooms. And we did have the art, our art classes in the band room, which is a little off putting for the last day, but it was, it worked. Graduation rehearsal is June 26th, which is a Thursday at 10:00 AM. The seniors have to be engraved in our brains. We have to be there. And then graduation itself is Friday, June 27th at 6:00 PM. So fingers crossed for nice weather because having it outside would be lovely. And of course, the whole board is invited to that. And I hope some of you guys can make it. The graduation parade, I think that's kind of around eightish is generally where it tends to fall after graduation. And I saw, there's so much high energy in the high school right now. Like I know I said that, but between like summer coming and people starting jobs and starting college, it's just a really fun environment to be in right now. And yes, it is my last board meeting. I want to thank all of you. I want to thank administration. I want to thank the students and the teachers and everyone who has made not only my time on the board, but my time as a senior and a student at Chatham special because it has seriously been an amazing time. And I'm so honored to have gone to experience my time here. And I think that my time as the board representative has been extremely valuable. I'm going to take a lot of the skills that I learned with me throughout college in the future. Thank you.
I am so pleased that it is having, you're having such a happy moment with, with the end of the school year. And my son had a similar situation. You carried that with you. It stays with you, those last moments. These great traditions to walk through in elementary school, they're just amazing. As you're not from being from Chatham, I'm learning all of these things. And it's just amazing what happens here. And I just, I love it. And I'm so glad that you're getting the full feels about this, Sasha. We really, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much. Best wishes of everything, all of your endeavor. Unfortunately, I can't be at your graduation. I have, one of my nieces decided to get married out in California. You know, it was either that or Miss Regent's for my son. I'm like, well, I guess we gotta miss graduation. So, all right. So my apologies for not being there for you. But have a wonderful day. Have the best of your class. Anybody else have anything to say?
I was going to say Sasha, you're already a teacher. I know you've helped out in other buildings, but you certainly have taught us a lot and brought us a lot of information. Thank you.
And like I said before, you, you really have a bright future ahead of you. And any child that's in your classroom someday is going to be really, really lucky.
Okay, Andrew, that's a tough act to follow, but unfortunately.
It's always impossible. Always impossible. All right, my turn. So I, I would say from the, to sum up, the last couple of weeks, I would say is packing and moving. So we have really taken on a big project here in Chatham coming forward. We are in the process of packing up about 16 classrooms here at the high school. But I, I have to say a big thank you to Mabes. Mabes has been phenomenal. They have, they have truly, you know, professionally really packed up the classrooms of our science, art, and our technology classrooms. They're completely empty. Before you leave, just take a look at how they look, you know, empty. But they did a phenomenal job. They did a really nice job packing. They're starting right now to start moving our six interior classrooms. They're going to actually start tomorrow to do that. And I want a big thank you because a project is no easy task for anybody. But a big thank you to our teachers and our staff and administration for being flexible and really helping us get this project done. For those of you that don't know, in order to get our ambitious project done this summer, we had to release our classrooms by the 18th, which is coming up very, very soon. So we had to make sure everything was stacked up early in order to get the project done in time. So I just spend a lot of time meeting the project managers. We have another meeting tomorrow, Mike and I. Mike is, is not able to be here. He's supposed to come a little bit later. And that's why he's not here. But we've been having a lot of meetings with our projects. I do want to let the board know that you are approving a resignation of Amy Deegan, our facilities director, which is a challenge for sure because we want to have a big project. But Mike and I together will be managing this project with our, with our project managers as well as our architects. So we really are doing a lot to really get on top of this. It's a service job, so we already started canvassing. We have a list on the day of canvas we can start to bring in. So we can do that as soon as possible. Depending on what we get on the canvas list, you know, we might try to get a return as well just because we have this big project happening this summer. So as much help as we can, we can help, you know, the better. So we are working through that. We're, we're really eager about the project. The work is actually starting on the 18th, like I said. They're doing its second shift because it's regent time. So they can't do any work during regents. More up to date on that. We're already starting to plan for next summer's project. So we're moving with our music teachers and our architect to finalize the music suite. And architects are coming in next week as well too with our principals at the high school to really help us lay out all of our plaques and our awards and our awards because that's the thing they do as well. So a lot to do in the project. I have to say Music in the Park was an amazing event. It truly was. To see our students come together between all three buildings and performing together and seeing as kids came and went and just seeing the difference in music. And a big thank you to our music staff. What a, what a, what a fortunate place we have here in Chatham. Very talented students. And what an amazing turnout from our community. It was, it was a fantastic event. Lot of celebrations here in Chatham. I, I have to say, you know, I'm finishing up my first year as the superintendent of this district. And I have to say I get goosebumps on a regular basis because of the traditions and the customs and the excitement. And, and I haven't met, I've been in a couple of districts and I haven't met such polite and respectful students as I have in Chatham. Truly, you know, really, really kind kids and they, and they're, and they're just amazing. And I want to thank our teachers. We had a lot of change here. I want to thank them for supporting us during this time of change and this transition in leadership. And I want to thank all of our leaders for really working together to really continue to make Chatham the best place we can be. We have, the future's really bright here and I'm excited to help lead it. So I just had to say that as I finished up my first school year. A big congratulations to our softball champs, New York State Class B softball champions. I, I have the pleasure of going up to Binghamton to watch them at their final game and to watch them win. And again, goosebumps. That's all I can say is just seeing those girls come together and the excitement of that win was phenomenal. So congratulations to those girls. You are going to be, we're going to be doing our first read of a new policy. I know many of you have heard the change from New York State on the bell-to-bell ban on cell phones for students starting next year. So what I did is we created a stakeholder committee of students and of parents and of teachers and administrators. And we met and we reviewed the law. And then we reviewed a draft policy. So we took that draft policy from our policy committee and we made, and we made some recommendations to it. I know Mary Ann's going to talk a little bit more about the policy committee in a little bit. But from there then, we took that policy, we made recommendations, then the policy committee met and we're presenting that to you today. So I want to let you know that was a very collaborative, collaborative activity. And we are really hopeful that this policy will help us follow that state mandate that's coming up. I'm really excited. You know, we want to celebrate everything we've been doing here in Chatham. We're having an end of the year picnic next Thursday. And I wasn't sure, you know, you try something, not sure how it's going to turn out. We're, all administrators are going to be making hamburgers and hot dogs for all the faculty and staff. Everybody is invited. And then we did a sign up sheet for people to bring salads and drinks and, you know, and appetizers and everything. And I couldn't believe how fast that filled up. You know, within an hour, the sheet was filled up. So I think that they're excited about it. So we're looking to really just celebrate our school year together between all three buildings and transportation and so forth in our end of year picnic next Thursday. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to echo a couple of things. The, the Music in the Park, what a great evening that was. Just all the weather cooperated, the people, little kids, older people, the community. It was just, it was such a, such a great night. And all the wonderful things about Chatham came back to me while I was here. And it was just some, some past superintendents were here and it was just nice seeing people. So great night. And to the softball team, the state champions, I can't tell you the texts and things of friends of mine who's, they said, are you back there? They just want to see. And it's one of those little things, you're saying, you never know just how far a reach is, like the throw a pebble up on, right, the ripples of how big that is. So just super proud of them and congratulations to the, the girls, to, to coach Brantley and the whole team. Just very special. Just wanted to echo what others had said. For my update, pretty brief tonight. I know Andrew had shared with you and your board packet, the MTSS framework. So I know one of my first board meetings of being back, we talked about this and I promised you an update. And so I know Andrew shared it with you. To review quickly, one of the districts academic, the academic goal, one of the priorities is to evaluate the district's MTSS process, make needed updates based on best research practices and student needs. And that's what we've done. I'm really proud of what we've put together collaborative process. And I want to recognize some folks, the AIS academic team and their teacher leader, Lindsay Risto, played a huge part giving great feedback and, and letting me bounce ideas off of them. And they're, they're in this world, so hearing from them was really important. All the teachers, the administrative team, I would share as we're going through and get their feedback. I appreciate that. I worked with, you know, folks at Questar, CASDA, Curriculum Associates. So this is a research-based, best practices document, it truly is. And so shared with people the whole way through, especially obviously Andrew as well. And so it, it really represents, you know, like seven, eight months of, of work. I think it's a great guide and a roadmap to how we do MTSS here. You know, I would, I would say a couple of things. We'll take a deeper dive into it over the summer and in the fall. And, and just stress the fact that, you know, it's a, it's a living document. As we, as we learn more or, or other research develops, we'll continue to modify it. To, this is all about directly providing students with what they need. And I think we, I don't, we definitely do have the roadmap for that. And I feel really good about that. And, and again, I just want to thank everyone who contributed to it. And see if any of you had, I know you've had a place to look through any questions.
I think it's great to take that whole world of theory and come up with the beginning of a, of a roadmap here for Chatham. I'm curious, from your level at the, in the administration, are you planning a catalog of interventions that you're going to maintain in your office? Or is this framework, this methodology, something that's going to be, your focus is really on sort of the why, the how, and then what the actual supports are, go down to the building level? How does that?
Yeah, so somewhere it's, MTSS, there's no set curriculum. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be anything like I could put into a binder necessarily. But I think, Matt, keeping a record of the successful interventions that we're doing, exploring different techniques, different modalities of providing this support, those are the things that I think in my answer to your question, like my role would be, yeah, kind of to catalog those and share those with, you know, new interventionists or, you know, share with each other. I think through the, the academic team structure and the fact that this group meets regularly, that'll be an opportune time and place for us to share those, those strategies. So, yeah, I, to answer your question, yes. I think we'll put together a list of, you know, our most successful interventions as we go along.
Did you end up finding a piece of tracking software for this? I know you were shopping.
We did. Yeah, it's the, it's called RightPath. And it pretty much can do whatever we want it to do. We want to start out keeping things very simple with, you know, iReady scores, any other universal screeners that we might be using, secondary diagnostic, New York State data. You can even put in SEL, where reviewing, you know, different mental health, screeners. Anything that we, that would be of value for this can go in. And that's what's kind of nice about RightPath is that it's very flexible to what we want to do.
And once we go get up and running with that next year, because it's being implemented next year, we will show you a demo of it so that way you can see what it looks like.
Yeah, that was going to be the follow-up question. That sounds like a big thing to implement.
So what they're doing this year is they're setting it up for us. The nice thing is, is they do all the work for us. They put all the, we work with our data specialists. They actually link a lot of it to our, our student software system. So a lot of it gets inputted and they input it all for us, which is the nice part. So we just have to give training to our teachers on how to look at it. They don't have to put it in themselves. And then our RTI teachers are going to be actually using it to progress monitor their students as well. So it's a tracking piece. So we'll show it to you. We can't actually show you obviously the student data because that's not, but we could show you like a demo of it. Of fake students.
Yeah. I'm imagining some of the sources that you theoretically like to have in that system are harder than others to get in there.
Yeah.
Is that the type of thing where there's going to be, like some of these things I would imagine need to get assigned to a person to go like manually put them in there in some, some type of manual process? It's not going to be magical?
So what we're going to do is we're going to put every sort of data point we can think of in this system. So like, for example, we'll have students attendance in there. We'll have students quarterly grades in there. We'll have the Regents in there. We'll have, next year, we're going to be doing a socially emotional survey. That results will be in there. We'll have state testing in there. We'll have iReady in there. We'll have behavior records in there. So it's a, because right now, everything is living in its own little place. So next year, a teacher's going to log on to their account and they're going to have their kids there. They click on the name and they're going to have a profile of that student right there.
Is FastBridge on that list?
Fast, what we, whatever, whatever it is that we have, we'll put on there. Are we using, are we still using FastBridge?
We did not purchase FastBridge for next year.
It hasn't been utilized.
So for targeted diagnostics, we're doing what?
One that we have is, and we'll probably use a little bigger, is like Dibbles Next, it's called, through Akademia's learning, is that, it's, it's used to speak called Dibbles. It's one of those.
That's good in like the, the K4 or whatever that you need to target.
Yeah, I mean, it goes K8, but I think especially probably K6, it's, it's very.
And that's got specific diagnostics.
Yes.
Literacy and stuff.
Yeah. So if you think of iReady, that's kind of that big umbrella.
It's just a number.
And then Dibbles and these things will let you kind of drill down into what does a student really need? Where, why, why is this one in the iReady here? That this will let us drill down.
The reason I'm asking is, Pathos and Penile and some of those other diagnostics are great that we have professionals that learn them. But when we're, when we want to compare data over time, you need a level baseline tool. So I can't wait to hear. So, um, I can't wait to hear whether that, whether that tool works out better than FastBridge. I know FastBridge was, it's, it's a lot, it's a huge time suck. One more thing. I know that, you know, there's a number of reasons why the focus is on the, um, intervention supports, um, but on the enrichment side, I'm really interested in seeing the report in there, not because I'm more interested in that stuff than the interventions, which I think is more important, but because I already know the state is looking over your shoulder on the intervention side. Um, so I feel like we have to, we have to put more oversight there as our body.
The state has no intention to that. No, I think, Matt, one thing that I think's important to try to change the vocabulary a little bit is the enrichment. It is an intervention. It's just the other side of the.
All right, you, you teach me the right way to frame that and I will.
No, 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 and I think this, this is, it's kind of a new way to think about it. Because if a student needs that extra challenge, that's still, like you said, MTSS is, is about giving students what they need. And if they need more, that's still an intervention. Like, that's the way I try to process that, is we're providing students.
I think that, um, we're going to have a couple more tough budgetary years. And I'd like to see how those budget dollars actually relate to tiers. So, and that's like, we're probably like eight months out from needing to make a hard conversation there, decision. But, um, if I can see that there's stuff on level one, two, and three on the enrichment side, and we've got it budgeted, I won't, you know, push so hard on some of those budget plans.
And we're, we're really, we've had, I've had a lot of conversations with our administrative team about using scheduling to help with enrichment. And, um, too, some teachers will be assigned to some enrichment time with kids at all three levels. Um, so we're working through that as well. So utilizing any extra space in people's schedules for enrichment type work. So it's, it's all part of that conversation and it's definitely part of the MTSS process. The good news is, is we have a really, you know, when, when, we always had MTS, but we didn't have a solid process until, you know, now. Um, and under Terry's leadership, we were able to do that. So now that we have the process, now we can start really honing in on the interventions. And that's what some of our professional development will be geared upon, is helping our teachers with interventions and understanding that it's not just our RTI specialists or, or AIS teachers' responsibility. It's everyone's teacher, it's everyone's responsibility to provide those interventions if they're, if they're, whatever their grade level is. And that could mean enrichment as well. So, um, a lot to come on that. We're going to be talking about this every year, because this is a really important topic. In order, you, you really need a good MTSS process to have a great special education process. Um, we want to try it out here first and then you go into special education.
One more question before I let this one go. Um, are there any implementation right now? Are they loading baseline data on pre-K through 12, or are we targeting?
Pre-K to 12, you know, we'll have a snapshot for every student, you know? And that's what they're working on now, and then we'll be implementing next year. And I've used it in my past district and it's really easy to use as a teacher. And what, one thing that we talked about is we want to make sure that, that they are going to be doing a lot of the inputting. Um, and that's the nice thing about this, that they do need putting for us.
Your question, Matt, is, you're correct. Some of the assessment data is going to be a little unique, putting it in. So I've been meeting with them about, so like state test scores, iReady, those, they have, our technology team has been working with them. So it's on ClassLink, it's a very simple thing to put in. Some of the locally made, you're right, it's going to be, so I, I'm working with them, what do you need? But they do all the manual of data entry, essentially. So that's, that is.
You can just throw in the spreadsheet and they figure it out.
Yep, correct, yep. Great, yeah, it is great. And most places don't do that. So that's why we went with it. Very easy to work with.
That sounds promising.
And I actually saw it done, so I know they actually do it, which is nice.
I've been on the board for three years and Matt's had this conversation every time about the data. So we've been about the data. And we'll see what, uh, how we do.
And it's going to be also important too to have other types, not to keep going, but we had a large opt-out rate this year. Um, so we can't, we can't just base it on state, state data, you know? So we need to make sure we're developing our own data and analyzing it. I, I, I knew that was going to bring up something else.
Was the state analyzing it when we were doing, when we had a better test rate? I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Mike's not here.
I kind of gave the facilities update within nine.
Um, and you, pretty much the first reading of the policy, you gave an overview on that too. The group of stakeholders looked over what, um, we had to start with. There wasn't a lot of wiggle room, but there was enough window. You were on that committee, did you want to say words about that?
It was really a pleasure to work with that group, because everyone kind of had an equal footing on it. You know, we all came up, we had ideas. Um, and the important thing I think we need to remember is we had no choice on this policy, but we made it as much Chatham's as we could, as we went through it. And I think parents, you know, I just read a research article and they are what they are, but that over sixty-five percent of parents in this particular research were for the ban of cell phones. But the things that they at least felt about, but the things that they were most concerned about were that they could get messages to their children if they needed to do that, their students. And, um, also those messages and also that we had a system in place where they would be notified in case of any emergency, there would be clear communication lines. And I think we do have that, and it will get better over time as we know. But the policy is, is as good a policy as I've seen on this and, uh, something we're going to work with, see how it works. And again, policies are things that can be revisited, but for now, we must do it. And I think the group that met in our, thank you to our policy committee, did it very well.
One thing I noted, that we're going to have to amend our code of conduct, um, has a section regarding electronic devices that will have to be updated once this policy is, is approved.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that within the thirty days to make sure it matches, because this would be the time to do it.
Uh, all right, quick question there. Uh, I read the policy. It looks like we're pretty aligned with what we were already doing, which is good that we were able to get it there and have legal approval on that.
For that, your, the cellphone policy, right?
Correct me if I'm wrong here, that most material change is in the high school lockers instead of bags?
So the biggest change, the biggest, so middle school's really identical, really no change. Because they, they had to have, they could not have their lockers out at all during middle school. The difference is that the high schools, students are allowed to have them on the hallways and at lunch. Um, that, they no longer allowed to have them during those times. And the other big change is we are saying that lockers are, that cell phones have to be in lockers. And that's according to New York State. Now, we, we are not going to, you know, the hard thing is, is our students have been really respectful following the policy, you know? So we're not looking to, to create a larger issue here, but students have to know that they're not allowed to be out in class. Um, but yes, we're going to be directing students to keep them in their lockers next year.
Be interesting to see how long we can hold that.
Yeah, it will be, it will be. And what, yeah, it's, we're optimistic. We hope that our, our students will be respectful. Um, you know, we have to follow what we have to follow from New York State regulation. But I, I just have to say to our students, um, they are respectful already, um, with the rule, and we really thank them for that. Um, you know, students are not abusing that in classrooms and being respectful with it, they're following their teacher's direction. I don't think that is happening in every school district across New York State, and I think that's why this law was put in place.
So we're going to approve the summer curriculum projects. Um, our one hundred, be it resolved, the Board of Education approved, the following summer curriculum project in twenty twenty-three. Should I list them out or? Okay. Can I have a motion? Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, I have a question. When was the last time we were, we updated texts for seventh through twelve ELA? Does anyone in this room know? That's a big project, um, in here. I'm just taking on a biggest one, but I'm also curious how frequently we update texts.
So, so that stems from a student group. Um, they have been, they have been using, you know, texts that maybe were a little bit more traditional in some of our English classes. Um, and that was the Empowering Student Group. Actually, Sasha, you were part of that group, right? Do you want to talk a little bit more about what you guys came to your English department on and what they, what they agreed to? This was a, this is student empowerment at work, which, as a superintendent, it makes me happy.
So this was one of our discussions in, mainly in student government this year. Um, I think it might have even come to our attention last year, and then we started working on it in the beginning of the school year, that the books we're reading in English are very, kind of all like similar in a way, and there's not much diversity amongst them. So our advisor is an English teacher, and so she was talking to us and she said that it would be very possible to get the curriculum either like diversified or changed in some way. So she met with the English team and proposed the idea, and they were all super open to it. So they took classes during one of the PD days, I believe, with Bard College.
Yeah, so they came, the English department came with a proposal to make to offer some PD from Bard College. And they've been working with our English staff on, on updating this. So that, 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 that summer work is a continuation of the work they've been doing this year. So it's pretty amazing, and that's really what it, what it's all about.
This is driven by students.
Yeah, that's the best part.
Also by boring books, but, uh.
Well, no, it's honestly not even that. We love the books you read in England, it's just, they just want more.
And more diverse. And the nice thing is, is Bard College is assisting them through this. So, you know, they're not just thinking random.
No, Bard loves projects like this.
And they've been very, they've been very, um, they've been very good to work with. So it's a really fun project. So yes, it's a big project, but it's already been underway and a lot of support. Yeah, happy you brought that up, because that was.
The reason behind that, because I was looking through the list and I was curious where some of, some of the summer work was headed.
One thing to have to share with that one is at, so Meg was here tonight, uh, eighth grade, right hand, in the process of interviewing for, um, uh, seventh grade as well. Those two teachers will also be included in this. So that's something I had added on, because I think to, you know, spiral this down. It really is from a, an English pedagogical standpoint, how do you do this? How do you, you feel like you're committing major sins of the English world if you don't teach those from the canon, right? And now there's so many great books that have been written in the past ten, fifteen years that, but actually doing it. So Matt, I appreciate your question. Um, it can be hard and most students are the ones who bring up the question. What a perfect, powerful way to do it. So I agree, it's really exciting and, um, we're going to end up with some really great books and texts and a better program for the kids.
Did we all vote, all in favor?
No, we have to do all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? We'll move on to consensus agenda. Our one-on-one, be it resolved, that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda M through O as written. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Does anyone have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, so we'll move on to items with future agenda. Does anyone have any suggestions?
Will we go and go back to the board's self-evaluation? Not now, I'm just saying, for the, that's the tricky.
Yeah, we'll have to. I know that, that's unfair.
Okay, thank you. Yes, yes.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll move on to our second public comment. Does anyone have any?
Let's be sure to sign in here. Just realizing, I've actually never sat in this seat before, all the times that I've been in this room. I'm here tonight because it's a special night tonight, even though it seems pretty low-key. And I wasn't going to miss it for twenty-five years on this board, Muriel. Now you're getting me choked up now. It's been such an honor to serve with you. And during those twenty-five years, you served with fifty-five different community members. And we've all felt that it's been such an honor, that tonight, we'd like to present you with a bouquet of sunflowers. Fifty-five sunflowers, to be exact, one from each of us. Those who couldn't be here tonight, I put their sunflowers all together and many have sent cards, and they really wish they could have been here with you. You're receiving thirty-two sunflowers with black centers, which represent the thirty-two members that you served with from twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-five, and twenty-three sunflowers with yellow centers that represent the members that you served with from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen eighty-six. And it's just been such a pleasure that we wanted to present that to you. And here with me, there are a few of us from the twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-five, but we also found a nineteen seventy-three and nineteen eighty-sixer.
And that's me. Hello there, my name is Linda, I'm Linda Galati. And I have, I have the pleasure of working with Muriel from nineteen seventy-four through seventy-nine. And I've seen you off and on through time in the various, you know, you're everywhere in certain things, the theater, over here or there. And, um, when they said this was happening, this was your last board meeting, I said, of course, I would, I would, I just had to come. Um, and I really appreciate all the time that I spent with you. We, we, we really did what we had to do to the best of our ability for the benefit, not just the students, but the teachers and the community at large. But you're in pressure. Well, I have changed, I have to say that.
This has been some weight for me.
I can imagine, I can imagine, because it's, it's so much part of you, and this is just another part of it. But I'm sure you're going to be doing some fabulous things, and continue to do fabulous things.
I'm sure I will.
I'm sure you will.
Rachel. My girlfriend.
Well, we, it's, we, we got just, we're board members, we were really good friends, and we have families that work together also. So it's, it's been, it's been a time.
And what I learned about this experience too, is that our cra, our paths might not have crossed had I not joined. Like, joining this board introduced me to so many community members that I could have missed in this community, since there's only nine thousand of us. And that's what really makes it so special.
Muriel, from the Scarleteers. To you today. You guys all figured that out sometime and spending time with her. We were almost not the Panthers. She voted for Scarleteers when Panthers got named. She's a fine example of, uh, community right here. We're all very, uh.
That's what they are.
It's a great community, Muriel's been a part of it. Great example.
And I have to say, this is like my third Muriel celebration. One awesome chicklet. And I'm glad I got to know you, and I consider Muriel my friend. I mean, when we were on the board, we had some tough times, you get that call. You want to come over for coffee? Coffee, you talk to her, she's always pretty neutral, steady, pretty. Really, I mean, or I don't know what everybody else is. But I appreciate you, Muriel, and you enjoying your time. I know she's still going to be busy, she told me a lot of things she's still doing, so hey, more power to you.
Muriel, you were, you were on this board. How, I am just, it wasn't mine.
Yeah, well. Well, I'll be around. After I get this filming filled, I'll be around.
I know. Very lucky to. Very lucky to.
My first memory is a ranking in East. Back, raising, back, back, and walked into the, um, to the Ebar Theater. So, up to today. And the only good thing about the recovery is that.
Oh, my God. Oh, please, maybe we need to have a.
It's a fabulous night, y'all, for coffee.
Oh, he used to do that.
I thought, that was every one of us.
Yes, he called out, "Pail." He's a. Oh, my God.
Yeah, you've been only, as long as I've been alive.
Thank you so much. I was, thank you so much for making that connection. I call that head real good. Holy moses.
Administrators, we come today. So, Muriel, on behalf of the district, we also, and the administration, we also wanna thank you for your service and your, and, and what you do for all of us here in Chatham. So, we, we truly appreciate you. You're gonna be missed on the board. Um, you have made many friends here in Chatham, um, board members, students, teachers, staff, administrators. So, on behalf of the school district, I, I give you this plaque, um, in recognition of your, of your two different terms. We counted twenty-six total, but maybe, maybe it is twenty, maybe twenty-five and a half, I'm not sure, but we counted twenty-six, whatever it is. So, we have nineteen seventy-three to eighty-six, and twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-five, whatever it is, twenty-five or twenty-six. We honor you and thank you. And us administrators, we have, we each wanna present you with a, a daisy as well. Or actually, where are the, Gerber daisies, right?
I just wanna say something, because Muriel's, Muriel would come to the building, and she would come in my office, and she would say to me, "Listen, you tell me the truth. Is everything okay here?" I said, "Yes, Muriel, everything is fine." Because she just cares about all of us, so thank you so much.
She invited you to coffee? She invited you to coffee?
She has invited me to coffee, yes.
You found the bush, right?
Huh?
You found the bush, right?
I did.
What did you read? Generations.
Yeah, me too. Happy birthday. I'll, I'll be in touch.
Happy birthdays.
Oh, we're so happy to have you here.
Oh, happy birthday, buddies.
We'll have coffee.
I mean, when, we did that beauty parade, just, when this little thing there was a cotton.
You're welcome. You're welcome to it anytime. It's green after you.
Thank you so much.
And I think current board members, they're welcome. Jesus, flowers coming. New guy coming in here.
I want you to know, Craig, I've only been inviting you to coffee twice.
It must be.
I did go so good. He's my new guy. I, I dug him up for the board.
So, we're gonna close, um, we are entering an executive session, so we're gonna close this session. And I have a motion to, should we pause it, because we're gonna, like, hop up and then, we're not ready to enter an executive session. How can you do this? Okay, so motion to enter executive session. Anyone have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Um, motion to appoint Don Freeman as district clerk pro temp, and a motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, we do not anticipate returning to open session. Um, so we adjourn.